Hi, Michael.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
Hi, Mr. Trentowski.
Hey, Mr. Cipriani, how are you?
All right. Hi, Caitlin.
Hello.
Hi, all good in life?
Yeah, no, so, um, hi, Lisa, so, yeah, all right. Hi. Hi, everybody.
Hi, Eddie.
Hi, Margaret. Hi, Mrs. Kowalski.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you? Nice to see everybody.
You too.
Thank you. Hi, Dr. Ross. Hi. How are you? Hi, Mrs. Castro Giovanni. Hi, Mrs. Dando. Hi, Mrs. Samco. Nice to see everybody. Hi, Mr. McIlw.
Hi, Dr. Vacchio. Good to see you. Hi, Miss Dillon.
I know, I feel like I haven't seen anybody in so long.
I know. I saw, I saw Miss McGilley this afternoon. It was so nice. Hi, everybody. Um, so, Ms. Kowalski will be presiding over this meeting. Is everybody here who needs to be here? Can we see? Uh, one, two, three, five. Dr. Ross is here. I think we are all here.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Kowalski, um, I'll just say something about the microphones and how we'll do that in a moment, but the meeting is yours?
Okay, let's, so let's convene this workshop meeting. Um, I would like to welcome everyone in the public who has decided to join us. Um, and first, I guess we should, um, call the meeting to order and have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so let's start our workshop session and I'll turn it over to Dr. Seinfeld.
Thank you, and thank you, um, to those of you in the community, as Ms. Kowalski said, who are joining us by live stream, especially those of you, uh, of the families, of the students we will be honoring this evening. I will ask that anybody who is not speaking, including myself, I will mute myself, so if it helps with the feedback, if you mute yourself, and if not, I may need to mute you if we get a lot of feedback, and just know that if I do mute you, I can't unmute you, you have to unmute yourself. So I think you know that it has become a tradition for us to honor some of our sixth grade, soon-to-be-seventh graders at a Board of Education meeting in June each year, and so we didn't want to let a pandemic get in the way of that. And so it is my honor to introduce Dr. Vacchio, the proud principal of the Vernon School, to introduce some colleagues, and I know we have a lot of students and families watching and listening. Dr. Vacchio?
You have to unmute.
Dr. Vacchio, you need to unmute. Right now you look frozen. I don't, no.
Okay, so thank you, Dr. Seinfeld, and members of the Board of Education, for this wonderful opportunity. Uh, we are very grateful. Um, so thank you. It gives me great pleasure to welcome and introduce my friend and colleague, Mr. Kevin Trentowski, Director of Physical Education, Athletics, and Health, uh, in Oyster Bay Schools, and he is here with us this evening to present the Vernon Physical Education Awards to this year's sixth graders.
Thank you, Dr. Vacchio, and it's great to see everybody. I hope everybody's doing well this evening and their families are doing well. I have three awards that I'm going to give out to, uh, six students from Vernon, sixth grade. The first award that I'm going to present is the Heinz Posh Award. This award is given annually to two sixth-grade students who demonstrate outstanding character, have a rigorous work ethic, and excel in physical education and athletics. This year's recipients are Dylan Nola and Grace Samelduski. So congratulations to tho- those two students for the Heinz Posh Award. My second award goes to two students. It's the Scholar-Athlete Award. This award is given annually to a sixth-grade boy and girl who have demonstrated outstanding achievements academically and athletically. Please congratulate Molly Migliolico and Finn Quirk. That is the Scholar-Athlete Award. So congratulations to them. My third and final award was actually given to students, or would have been given to students earlier in the spring. It's the Nassau Zone Aford Outstanding Elementary Physical Education Student Award. The mission of the Nassau Zone of the New York State Association for Health, Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance, also referred to as Aford, is to support, encourage, and provide guidance to professionals throughout Nassau County in developing and conducting quality programs in health, physical education, recreation, and dance. This year, the Nassau Zone would like to recognize one male and one female student as outstanding physical education students. These students have shown a concern for health and wellness, fitness, and embody the values encouraged by physical education staff in line with the New York State Curriculum Learning Standards. Our recipients this year are Marlo Knox and Lucas Sansone. So congratulations to those students. Thank you, Dr. Vacchio, for allowing me to present these awards to these six students, and again, it's great to see everybody this evening, and I hope everybody stays well. Thanks.
I just want to jump in. Dr. Vacchio, thank you, Mr. Trentowski, to let you know that we do have certificates. So families, you will receive the certificates, your children will, in the mail, the ones that you would have received if we were together in person this evening. Dr. Vacchio?
Thank you. Congra- thank you, Mr. Trentowski. Thank you, Dr. Seinfeld, and congratulations to all of our students. We're really proud of you. Great job.
Ms. Kowalski, can I ask Mr. Trentowski a quick question?
Sure, of course.
Mr. Mr. I, can you just tell us a little bit about while we have you, about the athletic awards? It sounds like you're doing some interesting things with some videos. Can you just give a, a quick rundown of that? Oh, spoiler alert, spoiler alert. No, 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 no. We, um, we recorded, the banquet was originally scheduled for Wednesday, June 10th. It is, uh, it has been pre-recorded. It was recorded last Wednesday at the high school. Um, just about every coach came in, uh, and just about every student that I asked to come in, uh, came in one at a time. We recorded it, and, uh, that's being edited and put together right now. And there will be an announcement about, uh, awards being distributed. Uh, some will be delivered on June 10th, and others will be delivered at a later date, but that information will be, uh, sent via an email to all families, probably on Monday, uh, so everybody is aware of what the plan is completely, but we, we're trying to stay true to a lot of things on June 10th, despite the circumstances. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McIlw, for asking, and thank you, Mr. Trentowski. He put together an amazing day for us with, uh, all safety precautions in place, and while it's certainly not the same as being together, it was done really, uh, professionally, so thank you.
Okay, oh, thank you, Dr. Seinfeld, again, and thank you to the Board of Ed, uh, for this, uh, opportunity. So in addition to the athletic awards, tonight, we will honor and recognize our sixth-grade students who will receive SEPTA awards, and we will also acknowledge and celebrate students who participated in the After School Friends Program. Um, I would like to take this opportunity just to share a little bit about this program with all of you. So this wonderful program, uh, which is facilitated by Ms. Colleen Kelly and Ms. Caitlin Dillon, provided an opportunity for Vernon's sixth graders to serve as mentors and role models for our special education students. It was truly heartwarming to observe the mentors and mentees collaborate and communicate with each other. The mentors worked hard to build relationships with their mentees by providing guidance, support, and encouragement. These mutual caring relationships benefited both parties as the mentees had consistent mentors and the mentors learned the importance of community service. Lives were changed through acts of kindness, mutual respect, patient actions, and encouraging words. This incredible program would not be possible without the support of Ms. Caitlin Dillon and Ms. Colleen Kelly. Special thanks to them both, and thanks to them for being here with us this evening. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank all of our families, um, who have joined us this evening, who supported this program by making sure that your children were picked up after school hours. We so appreciate you and the support that you provided. So at this time, please join me in welcoming Ms. Kelly and Ms. Dillon, who will acknowledge our sixth-grade students who will receive SEPTA awards, and they will also acknowledge our sixth-grade students who participated in the After School Friends Program. Thank you.
Good evening. So tonight, I'm going to start off with the SEPTA awards, so... Um, the purpose of the Extra Mile Award is to recognize a student who, despite various obstacles, have exhibited outstanding academic and personal growth throughout their years here at James H. Vernon. This student has exempli- emphasized the phrase "going the extra mile" and has impressed faculty and peers alike with his resilience, persistence, and growth. The recipient for the Extra Mile Award is Joshua Blanco Faleswas. Congratulations. I'm also here to, um, talk about the Student of Distinguished Award. At this time, I would like to recognize another student who has gone the extra mile. This incredible sixth grader has consistently shown a willingness to reach out to his fellow classmates, both as friends and mentors. His ability to connect with others in a kind and compare- caring way truly demonstrates going the extra mile. These important relationships that can't be forged, can, I'm sorry, important relationships that are forged cannot be understated. They could be life-changing. The recipient for the Student of Distinguished Award is Centino Palumbo. So at this time, we're going to announce our peer mentors. So Ms. Dillon will start.
Good evening. Ms. Kelly and I would like to present the certificates for the After School Friends Program. In our program, students with special needs are paired up with one or two mentors and an adult facilitator. The purpose of the program is to help the students with special needs develop and improve their social skills. Examples include learning to play games and activities they encounter at recess and making conversations with others. Each mentor receives didactic and hands-on training in which they learn about autism and Down Syndrome, how to effectively mentor others, and how they can be a friend to someone with special needs. Our peers worked with augmentative systems and token economies to help students adjust to all different situations and environments. We were extremely impressed with their eagerness to learn to be a better mentor. The program offers tremendous benefits for both the individuals with special needs and their mentors.
This year, our group was very excited to start. They would come into my classroom every day, multiple times a day, to say hello to my students. I would get multiple phone calls from teachers looking for their students. And I know it wasn't to get out of class, because each time they came in, they knew exactly that it would put a smile on my students' face. Seeing that each day was something we will never forget. We were extremely impressed with their eagerness to learn to be a better mentor. They would come into my room or ask before they had a session what they could do more to have a better connection with their friends. To the peers, you have raised awareness for kids that might not have a voice. You have made lasting relationships that mean so much more than you actually think. You have seen students for who they are and not what they have. We can't begin to tell you how proud we are of you because it would take all night. We know that our program didn't end the way we wanted it to, but I hope that going forward, you come back and visit, but also that you raise awareness in your next chapter. The world needs good people like yourself, so we hope you spread awareness and spread kindness. We thank you all so much for your hard work and dedication to this program. You have made a special, you have made it special, and we will always remember you for it. We hope each and every one of the mentors we are about to name understands the impact that they've had on our students and our hearts. And we can't thank you enough from the bottom of our hearts for the parents', um, cooperation through this hard time, and you guys have been incredible. And again, my families have reached out to me personally, saying thank you so much for having such incredible students in our program. They always remember this program, and years later, they always come back and say thank you. So again, thank you so much for this incredible year. So with that, we would like to call the peers to receive their certificates.
Alex Arneados, Mia Benkall, Zoe Cohen, Julie Conroy, Julie Duke, Zachary Green, Molly Haig, George Henry, Joseph Henry, Christopher Herrera, Giovanni Merinos, Molly Miglianico.
Sophia Munoz, Dylan Nola, Centino Palumbo, Finn Quirk, Lillian Robson, Gabriela Romano, Gracie Romano, Grace Semidolski, Jocelyn Shadler, and Finn Trotman. Thank you again for making such a wonderful program, and again, we hope that you come back next year, and, you know, you will be in the high school hopefully, and you'll be able to spread your awareness there and keep it going. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Dillon. Thank, it's just the most beautiful work, and you, you bring a tear to our eyes, knowing the commitment that you have to our students and the commitment that our students have to their peers. So thank you. Thank you, Mr. Trentowski. Thank you, Dr. Vacchio. Um, I'm so glad we had this opportunity to honor our students and not let COVID stop us from celebrating the students for their accomplishments. While you are welcome to, uh, view the rest of our Board of Education meeting, which is livestreamed, you are also welcome to, uh, log off of our Google Meet if you'd like. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and please stay well and safe. The next item under the workshop agenda is, um, as we promised in the fall, we wanted to return back to the topic of college acceptance and our high school gradu- our seniors' plans. And so I did enclose in the Board of Education packet, a, an outcome report for the class of 2020, and just some highlights of that. You could see all the schools that our students have been accepted to, and we're so proud of the variety and the diversity of the schools that we have on this list. And I'm very pleased to share that as of May 2029, 2020, 97% of our students have applied to college, and 88%, the last I reported to you had been 85%, but I know you know that some of the deadlines were extended in this circumstance, and so I'm pleased to report that we have an increase of 88% of our students have reported that they will be attending a four-year college, and that compares to 73% in 2019. And I know that that's one of the goals that we set for the year, and I'd like to take a moment to thank Dr. Mulhall, and Ms. Lasher, and Ms. Mian, and our counselors, and of course, our students and their families for their hard work in reaching this, um, the pinnacle of the college acceptance, which of course is one of the highlights for us, is celebrating that with our students. I'd also like to share that, um, our valedictorian and salutatorian, while the honorees are not, we're not having a Nassau County-wide breakfast on Friday, uh, Ms. Lasher and I will still be having our own socially-distanced celebration with our valedictorian and salutatorian, um, to honor them and their accomplishments. And I think you saw, but just in case you didn't see, the wonderful video that my colleague, uh, put together honoring the class of 2020, and he went to every high school in Long Island to get his own video of that. And if you'd like, I could also send you a copy of the video that's on our Nassau Superintendent's website that shows where the valedictorian and salutatorian for each of our, all the schools in Nassau County, where they're attending. So we're so proud of all of our students, and we're also really proud to have reached this goal that we set for the year, and I thank everybody involved in that work.
Thank you, Dr. Seinfeld. That's, that's great results. As you know, that was very concerning to the board with last year's results, and what an improvement.
Those are some very good numbers, uh, dramatic. And, uh, as far as the video is concerned, Dr. Seinfeld, I believe we do have the most beautiful high school front lawn in all of Nassau County, if not the country, and it's just good news that we probably will be having our graduation on that lawn. Thank you.
Thank you, and, you know, I'd just like to put a shout out to Ms. Lasher. She has worked very closely with our high school seniors directly. I've joined a couple of those conversations, as well as, um, their families. And so the decision, as you know, to delay to August is in the hopes that we can have the graduation in person and on our own property, and, you know, based on the data that we hear, we're, we're cautiously optimistic that we'll be able to do that. So thank you.
And, Dr. Seinfeld, can you send us that other video?
Sure. Yep, I absolutely will. Um, next is the budget vote and canvassing. I just wanted to be sure the Board of Education saw the memo that we received from Ingram and Smith. I'd like to thank Ms. Nolan and Mr. Cipriani and Mr. Butler for all of their hard work, and others in terms of turning on a dime and having all of the ballots mailed. I would like to share with you that as per, uh, as per the guidance, the votes cannot be counted, or the ballots cannot be counted before 5:00 PM on June 9th, so it is quite difficult to, um, ascertain exactly what time we will have results. We will be livestreaming this, as suggested by our attorneys. And in terms of who should be present on June 9th at the canvassing, I will quote directly from the legal memo. For health and safety purposes, it should be limited to those individuals who are essential for the conduct of the vote and the canvas of the ballots. This will include the district clerk, et cetera, those who are actually doing the ballot counting. In addition, Board of Education candidates or their designated poll watchers may also be present, but should be required to wear an appropriate face covering, like all others present at the canvas, if still applicable, and be positioned in a specific area of the location and adhere to social distancing guidelines. So if anybody is, uh, watching this and it would like to participate, I think it would be best if they contact Ms. Nolan or me. The vote canvassing will take place in the high school library. We will be doing, um, obviously putting social distancing precautions in place. Um, I know the Board of Education, um, has a special, uh, executive session that evening. We will be in the high school, but we'll be using a different space. Um, the chorus room, um, is where we'll meet for that. Um, and it really is difficult to say what time we will have results. So I don't know if Mr. Cipriani or Ms. Nolan would want to say anything more beyond that about how June 9th should look.
Have you gotten a lot of, um, ballots back yet?
Ms. Nolan, you need to unmute. Ms. No, there you go.
So, uh, my understanding is that there, if there are a large number of votes, that, um, that districts have, I believe, 24 hours to do the full count. But I believe by 8:00 PM, I think we'll get them.
This is Dando Agus today. We have about 700 ballots.
Ms. Nolan, somehow you're in here twice. So I would suggest, you're, right now you're muted, so maybe the easiest thing to do is if you look at the top right, there's a text box, and perhaps, um, you can, you see where Mr. Trentowski wrote "thank you, be well," so... Um, but the answer is yes, we have about 800 ballots so far, and I would like to take this opportunity to remind anybody watching, and of course, those of us present at this meeting, that they must be received by 5:00 PM on June 9th in order to be counted, and so we urge our community to exercise its right to vote.
So that's a sign, but, um, I was a little bit confused in one thing in the Ingram and Smith memo. Now, we hired, um, election inspectors, right?
Yes.
That we typically hire?
Yes.
Okay, because it said in the memo, "we're not required to," but that doesn't prohibit us from...
No, that's correct, and we, we did confirm that before we had the Board appoint those. I think it was at our last meeting.
Okay, great.
Yep.
And we have how many? Do, do you remember? About a dozen? Something like that. I, just, we should be able to get the count done that night.
Ten. Yeah, I mean, our goal is to do that, um, but it is difficult. It's the first time we're doing this. We do have a lot of workers. Um, and as you could see in the text spots, I'll read to you that, uh, we have 10 people working that evening.
Great. And then the other thing is, when do we have to pass the resolution to adopt?
I just conferred, uh, confirmed with Ms. Zdowski, we do not have to have a separate meeting to do so. It could be at the next meeting.
Okay.
So last but not least, under the workshop agenda, uh, we did ask for any correspondence to the Board of Education, um, that the Board of, uh, any comments to, and questions from the community to the Board of Education, since they're not part of this meet, but it is livestreamed, to be sent to Ms. Nolan in advance of our meeting. So we did receive one, and Ms. Kowalski and I had spoken earlier, and she asked me to read it aloud during the workshop agenda. And that, whoops, I have the wrong piece of paper. "A sincere thank you to the Board of Education, Dr. Seinfeld, Ms. Lasher, administrators, teachers, the fire departments, community members, and families who came out to cheer for the seniors in their parade on Tuesday. We know that a lot of planning had ta- had taken place to execute such a memorable event for these seniors. Traditions are important for these students, and celebrating in different ways at this time has shown that they are not forgotten. Our family is grateful for all that you do to make memorable moments for Julia and the entire class of 2020. Thank you." And that was from Mr. and Mrs. Cutajar. So, thank you very much, um, Ms. Kowalski, and I turn the agenda back to you.
Okay. Um, number three, which is personnel actions. Uh, "Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education, the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following professional personnel and civil service personnel resolution as listed." Motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. I forgot I was muted. Okay, I, I forgot, what, what do I say after this?
Any discussion?
Any discussion?
I would just like to point out that the Board of Education is about to act on the appointment of Lisa Marie Ditmar's appointment as a science teacher. She will be, um, replacing Ms. Fagan. Uh, you already acted upon her retirement. Ms. Ditmar comes to us with certifications in biology, chemistry, and an extension in general science, a bachelor's degree from the University of Maryland, and a master's degree in ecology from Stony Brook University, as well as advanced certification in science education from SUNY College at Old Westbury. And we were very impressed with her candidacy, and we are excited to appoint her, have you appoint her this evening. Thank you, Ms. Kowalski.
Thank you. Um, the motion carries, right?
Uh, yeah, all those in favor, yeah.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. The motion carries. Um, number four, special services. "Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich School District hereby approves the following special services resolution as listed." Motion? So moved. Second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? So the motion carries. Number five, new business. "Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education of the Oyster Bay East Norwich Central School District hereby approves the following new business resolution as listed." And that goes to... Oh, it's just right there. A motion? So moved. A second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Number six. "Special Services. Resolved upon the recommenda-" Wait, did I just do that one?
You did. Yep, you're up to, number six is, is adjourned. You, you, all the items have been approved, Ms. Kowalski.
Okay, I'm sorry. I have, I have multiple pages here, because I had to print it out on my printer, so it wouldn't do my phone.
That's because you're not using technology like...
I, well, listen, if I didn't have to be on the Zoom call, I wouldn't have paper.
I see, I see. Well, hopefully, we'll be back together soon.
Yeah, okay, so... New business went all the way there.
You just need a motion to adjourn.
Okay, the motion to adjourn? So moved. Second?
Second.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. I just wanted to remind those of you on either the Academic Committee and/or the Reentry Committee that both committees are meeting this week, so I look forward to seeing you at both of those meetings, and I hope everybody stays healthy and safe, and, um, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.